This conference will now be recorded.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Before we get started on the next item, I've got a request to amend the agenda to include an executive session to discuss ongoing litigation matters. And so if we have, if council is willing, then we would have a motion that the city council amend the agenda of its November 10th, 2025 meeting by adding an agenda item following item 12 to consider recessing into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for the purpose to discuss ongoing litigation and matter deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship. I think we just need to still move for that.
Still move.
Second, with a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Insert at number 12.
And then we'll do roll call.
Roll. Here.
Here.
Roll. Present.
Here.
Present.
Here. Thank you. Item number four is approval of consent agenda approving the minutes of the meeting from October 27 and statement of bills paid.
I have a question. On the bank statement, Bank Midwest, payment type regular. The first line item, City of Edwardsville, negative 490. What is that? Have we talked about this before? What is that?
Page on.
Uh, page four of six, sorry. Okay, just, it looked odd, so.
So in a motion to approve the consent agenda, it would be also to correct the spelling in the minutes.
Yeah, I've got one then. If we're gonna look at it like that, there was, Adcox made a motion to approve the reservations for fire apparatus. And she also seconded the motion.
Oh, in the minutes? I wish I had my notes from last time I wrote that down. No. I can send that correction from my notes from last time for who? Okay. So for that, we would have a motion to approve consent agenda items with corrections made that have been mentioned and statement of bills paid.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the corrections for the fire department apparatus, motion and second, and the spelling of the city attorney?
Litigation counsel.
Litigation counsel.
Pfizer.
And statement of bills paid. Second.
With a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox, will the clerk please call?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, item number five, requests or comments from the public? There being none, we will move on to item number six. Your presentation from the Wyandotte County Economic Development Activities from Representative Wyandotte EDC. We have Greg Kendall with us this evening.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having me this evening. I think she's gonna pull up the presentation as well. Congratulations on the groundbreaking this evening and always love those projects and just what I think it'll do for the community as a whole. So thank you for extending the invite and all the great things you all are doing out here. I've got a presentation for you this evening. It's a little bit different than what I think I presented to you in the past. I was always worried it'd get old or a little bit stale. And so what I thought I would do tonight is kind of give you an insight into really kind of the activities that we do on your behalf and in concert with your team. Talk about the sort of the estate of the environment for economic development and some of the sites that we have here in the community and what were challenges that we have and also how we might overcome that. And then if you have any questions at the tail end, then we can have a conversation about what that looks like as well. So hopefully, this is the first time I've given this particular presentation, but hopefully nothing that's too surprising. Mark is looking at me like, oh no, what does this mean? So I'm Greg Kendall. I'm president of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council, coming up on about 14 years in this role here in Wyandotte County. And so we've had a longstanding relationship with you all, with your team, and appreciate that. Appreciate you all being part of our organization as we look really countywide at economic development across the community. All right, so you all know this. I'll just kind of establish a real quick baseline, what our mission is, and that's essentially to work with anybody that wants to help drive economic development in the county, that lifts the county up. We spend a lot of time talking about how do we raise median household income, how do we get people more engaged, and how do we have a holistic approach to economic development? As you all know, Edwardsville is a slightly different animal in the county than, say, KCK in terms of median household income and types of jobs and types of households you all have here. And so it's a little bit different. You all are an anomaly in that you have significantly higher median household income than, say, KCK does. We focus on four key areas. Attraction tends to get that, you know, headline, the part that everybody always talks about. But we actually spend more of our time on the business retention expansion side. So we'll make about 200 to 210 business retention calls every year. About 10% of those are made here in Edwardsville annually. And we work with those companies on a regular basis like Varsity. So for instance, that magazine, the real nice one, Making in the Dot, is produced by Varsity, your book. So they do a nice job with us. Our higher-end publications, we do through Varsity, so it's published locally. But only because of them would we be able to do that level of printing on our particular budget. But it's also why it feels like sometimes like a yearbook, because they can do some really cool stuff that they throw into the mix as well. But we have a very close relationship with Varsity Yearbook and those guys. And then marketing promotions. So we take those materials far and wide. Those, just in New York a few weeks ago, Chicago, and then, you know, recently, you know, out west. And so we take all those materials with us, depending on who we're talking about. And each time we do that, we're really talking about all three communities that represent Wyandotte County equally. Always looking for the, you know, the best fit, the right types of projects, what's the market looking for, and what do we have? What do you all want there to be in those locations? And then the last part is workforce solutions, and that's an area that we spend an inordinate amount of time on, frankly, because as we'll see in a second, on sites lecture side, it's not just about the site anymore. It's do you have the people that can work there as well? And we really work that primarily near Edwardsville Industrial Park, where we're always kind of working with those companies to say, how do we do a better job of connecting you to folks who have the skills, but also looking at those wages? Because we're constantly having to remind them that in order for them to reduce their churn, they're gonna have to keep focused on those wages. And so we retain a lot of data around wage information, about where the job opportunities are. We have our own job board that scrapes from multiple different jobs boards and pulls it into one location that's specific to Wyandotte County. So this is kind of a, it's a lot of words, but it's really kind of captures, I think, the relationship that we have with you all. On a, depends on the project, depends on the day, but there's a little bit of everything of what we do with the city of Edwardsville on a regular basis, on an annual basis. And so just kind of walk through those, lead qualifications. So your funding of us at 15,000 annually means that anytime somebody calls and says, hey, I'm looking for X amount of land or this kind of building, we are fairly agnostic about where that is. We want to provide them a multitude of sites, frankly, across the county. But we're always sort of thinking about, okay, well, is this a good fit for the six acres that remains in the Edwardsville Industrial Park? Is this a good fit up at 110th Street? Is this a project that works really well at Kansas and 435? Well, somebody says, well, it's, one of the key drivers is trucking. Well, okay, well, 98th Street is not a truck route. So that's gonna be difficult, and it was just improved. And we know that, you know, we have residents up there who are probably not gonna want to see that. And so we're constantly trying to think about, what are the elements, what are the drivers for the project? But then what is the right fit for you all? And so when folks call into us, and, you know, we are beginning to see that transition from industrial to just more of that retail residential kind of development, then, you know, what does that look like? What are the questions that we have to be able to answer? What are the challenges for that? And then we're at that point of contact for our, your existing companies. And so if there comes a point at which we aggregate a certain amount of information, and we say, hey, you know, Mark, here's something that we keep hearing from the companies. And a few years back, that was childcare. And so we went down a very long path, talking about childcare. Before that, it was microtransit, as you all know. And we had that conversation for probably four years, and finally said, look, we've got to make a decision. I'm kind of frankly tired of talking about it. Let's figure out an option. And what was happening is that our companies were saying, hey, we need transit. Except that when you ask the question, well, how many of you have employees today that would ride the bus? And you might have four or five people. But then when you say, well, how many of you could commit to this number of employees actually riding a bus? All the hands went back down and were like, well, we can't fund transit like that. So we moved into a microtransit grant program, and that's ultimately what ended up happening. And now there's lots of other options. But this is kind of how we work through that. We, if they become these larger issues, we will pull all the companies together and have roundtables. We don't do this often. They don't have any big issues right now that they're really trying to address. They'd still love for us to find a childcare provider for them in that industrial park. But they have to provide us enough data to say, I have X number of families who say they need childcare, and I could keep that many kids operating in a childcare setting on a regular basis, because we have to figure out the cost piece of it. So we're playing that role so that you don't have to. Again, Edwardsville site knowledge. So we spent a lot of time talking to Mark and Doug as well about, hey, this is what we've heard about this particular piece of land or this building. What do you know about this piece of land or the site? Is the council thinking about that particular area? Thinking about the signature properties down at K32? You know, we start to know these properties like the back of our hand. And then, you know, talking about land use and development policies. So, you know, what are we not doing? What should we do differently? What is the market saying back to us when we tell them, hey, this is what the city might like to see there? Is that something that the market really wants to see? So I'll use the signature properties as an example. I keep looking at Mark. I'm like, at what point do I say something? He's like, no, stop talking. Don't, nothing to say. But for instance, we know we've had several folks who wanted to do self-storage on that site. That's not probably the use that we're really excited about. Does it pay property taxes? Yes. Is it low impact? Yeah. It's not gonna have any truck traffic that would engage KDOT, but it's really not what we're after. And so anybody calls us and says, hey, I want to do this version of it, a different version of storage, we're like, no, sorry, it's still not gonna happen. Now, we'll carry that message back through channels, but for the most part, we'll say, look, we'll get back to you in about 48 hours. But fairly certain that the answer is no, you know, we could do this, but not that. You know, we maintain a sites and buildings database for all of the communities, that data and research piece of it. So when we did the incentives analysis a couple of years ago, we're always gonna be looking to include all of our community partners. Now, in that particular case, we weren't really in a spot where we could capture that information at the time. But when we go back to do that analysis again, we'll come back to the city and say, look, we want to make sure we have a good cross-section of information from all of our community partners so that we're comparing apples to apples down the line. You know, are these programs working? The monthly team meetings, so we meet pretty regularly with Mark and Doug and try to make sure that we're staying up on whatever trends are going on, whatever the actions are that you all are discussing, that we're making sure that we're not falling behind on the kind of information that we have. And then we have an economic profile, the city as well, on our website, which was just updated the other day. I put some of the companies up here that we work with quite a bit. INX, for instance, is part of the Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education, or FAME program. That's with the Kansas City of Kansas Community College. It's really important to us that we have a multitude of companies involved from around the county being involved in those programs. And that's one of them that came out of a business retention expansion program, and that was one of the early adopters. They ran that program for a good bit for us. You know, Fastenal is another one that continues to expand, and that's a relationship that you all have developed and we've developed over time. And that happened many years ago, but we've seen the results and the benefits of having that relationship with that company from very, from a long time ago, that keeps paying dividends over and over. Same is true with FedEx. I mentioned Varsity. SAAI came in and took over the Old Dominion site. So we just continue to kind of figure out ways to grow the companies we have, keep the companies we have. We really see very little, you know, transferring out. We've got Alpha Broder that transferred out, but frankly, they didn't pay the best wages. So do you think that ultimately we'll end up probably a company that is even better for the community? You know, that's one that we spent a lot of time with, because they had a lot of very particular types of workforce that they really wanted, which was heavy on the female side. But they also had childcare issues, and we were trying to work with them on shift changes and, you know, trying to figure out, how do you work when most of your employees are women? Then you also have to be willing to work with them on their timeframes as well. And so at the end of the day, I think we'll end up with a, you know, a better fit for that facility. In the meantime, it's continuing to pay property taxes. Whoops, hey, all right, we're done. That was fast. Everybody catch that? So, yeah, okay. So I thought what I might do is take a moment and just kind of walk through this checklist a little bit. Some of them we've already discussed, but this is kind of the question we get on almost every project, regardless of whether it's an industrial project, technology, residential apartments, mixed use, whatever it is. This is kind of that list of questions, almost in order of really what the importance are to site consultants. So they are almost always asked the question, do you have a site or a building that meets our needs? And that's the first question. Can we do the project here? And then it's, do we have the labor? And that frankly extends all the way across retail to hospitality, to whatever, you know. Do you have programs? Do you have a community college program? Do you have a high school program? You know, can we ensure that we can get the people we want for the wages we're looking to pay? And then those labor costs. Infrastructure is a big one, and you'll see that pop up in my next slide. This infrastructure and accessibility issue is one we're really struggling with, really here in Edwardsville for a variety of reasons. Quality of life, you all do incredibly well on quality of life. That's a little less objective and a lot more subjective. But if somebody says, hey, I want to be in a smaller town, still close to all the amenities, but I want, you know, access to the interstate, and I want this and this and this, then we're like, well, yeah, there's like four locations in the county that really work for that kind of opportunity. Now let's drill down into what that really looks like. Taxes and incentives, most people tend to believe that all I do is work on giving incentives away. Actually, that isn't the first thing we deal with. We deal with all of these other things first, and sometimes all these other things below that are well before incentives. And I'll just, I mean, I'll tell you, I mean, our mindset is typically that one needs to be a butt for test. So but for the incentives, will the project occur? And two, incentives make a good project better. It don't make a bad project good. And so now that, again, can be subjective, but we are, again, working with your team on a regular basis to determine, what does that look like? How do we position Edwardsville in a position that we can win the project if we want it? But what does that take? And what steps does that require? We talk a lot about that. Are we keeping up with the market? What's everybody else giving? And I'm gonna show you some examples of the competition here in a bit. Energy is huge. So if you said, hey, I would love to be in this data center game that everybody's talking about because there's huge revenues to be made, I would say that would be great, except that we don't have a substation nearby any of the sites that you have available. But your very movement is just magnetic. And so looking at where that energy availability is, is critical. You know, right now, we don't have those assets in place at the locations that we would want them. So if you said, hey, Kansas and 435 actually would be a great place for that. While we have transmission generally closed, we don't have a substation nearby. We'd have to work with Avergy to figure out where to drop that in it. But it is implausible. But we'd have to make sure that we were developing a game plan for that. Environmental is huge. These days, fiber is always a challenge, although it will follow most projects. That is not our biggest challenge. And then this community and stakeholder engagement has become a growing issue, just because of social media has become such a big player. So let's talk about some of the key sites that we played with. This is some information that we talked about, I think, you know, previously as well. The first one being that 110th and I-70 location, former Hard Rock location. That's sort of the bane of my moving things forward up there, is those bondholders up there are a challenge, right? Because no matter what we talk about around those other parcels, everybody asks the question, what's happening with that parcel? And until we get that resolved, I think we're gonna still continue to struggle. Now, we could move to the other side of River View if we had the infrastructure. We could probably do residential or some other projects. The challenge there is actually that infrastructure discussion about how do you sewer that then? So you could, in theory, do just over the south side of River View and be able to lift station up and over the hump into your interceptor. But if you did a large residential development, you'd need to come south and figure that plan out. And, you know, we, you know, talking about single-family residential in particular. We want to talk about large lot residential. Originally, we were talking about whether that would be septic tank type of situation. But when you're talking about large lot, you're talking about much higher-end homes, and they're probably not as likely to want to do septic as they will wanting it to be actually on sewer. So then the question becomes, how do we pay for that? And how do we piece that together? Is that tied to a project that might be on the north side of River View? And even to the west, creating a bigger district where you drive a sales tax component so that it feeds the wastewater, stormwater, and sewer issues that we have there? You know, how do we figure that out so that you're not, you know, developing something you've got a bond? Because we're always looking to make sure that, you know, typically, we're all a little bit cost-conscious. We don't want to be in debt any further than we have to, and so we prefer a project to help drive definitive taxes, with the sales taxes or property taxes. And so those two things are somewhat linked. I do think that what happens west of 110th Street and north of River View may ultimately impact our ability to do things on the south side of River View, east and on the residential side. But it is gonna take some finagling, and then we're still playing with that process. There's some projects out there that we're kind of looking at, but just trying to make sure those all fit. Complicated location. That site, I think, will gain even more traction. Depends on perhaps what happens with the Chiefs, if they were to go across the road. I think suddenly that is another new player in the market space that could start driving more activity, generally in that corridor as a whole. Now, we think that that's a driver. You look at where they are today and where they've been for the last 50 years, it hasn't driven a whole lot of development at all, right? So there's, we'll have a little bit of a wait and see on just how much that's gonna drive. When we move over to Kansas Avenue and 435, I mentioned, you know, our big issue there is connectivity to the UG sewer. Because right now, that's our primarily best way to do that. That's probably a $2 million expense, give or take. So you can't just pick a project that doesn't drive any revenue, enough revenue, that a $2 million price tag is something they could afford to do, right? So, you know, we know that that's not gonna be logistics. We know that's not gonna be the certain projects that just don't drive any sales taxes at all or aren't just a big enough investment to drive enough revenue to cover that cost of, say, a benefit district or something like that. Although there is continued interest in that area. We've just gotta find the right one. But that connectivity to the UG is gonna be important, I think. Then you drop down to that signature property site. That one is largely tied to sewer connection. Now, we've had some conversations. I think that is going to move forward. I think probably in the next, I'm gonna say, the feedback we got just today is maybe another five months before they actually close on that property. But I think it's the similar development is where it's been proved by your planning commission. And so K32, the signature property site with Bush, the old Bush Farms on the south side of K32, about 12 acres, but 12 to 20 acres. But it's such a key piece of kind of finishing that out. It's the entrance way really into Edwardsville. And so we want it to look very much like the Plaza West development as well and kind of be that, you know, smaller, mid-sized company. They've done very, very well. We don't have a lot of that here. We just don't want it to be self-storaged or something like that. And so, but that challenge has usually been an issue of sewer, which I think we've resolved. And then secondly, if there's any, if there's really much in the way of truck traffic, then it triggers a KDOT study. And what we're trying to do is find a way to weave that needle just right so that we're not triggering a KDOT study, which is a whole lot more expenses along on K10, and that would probably kill whatever project, to the right balance. Something that looks like it belongs there, that kind of fits that whole K32 corridor, consistent with what you all have already done, and still drives a nice project. So that one is really moving forward. And then down at Woodin, we have looked at a number of projects there. I've walked away from a lot of projects right there. Some of them have just been frankly just too expensive. They wanted too much and didn't deliver exactly what we thought you all might want. I will say this, of all locations in Wyandotte County for river access, to me, this is probably the best location for river access, in my opinion. You know, you've got Cal Valley Sands sitting right there. I mean, you could literally make that beachfront fairly easily and fairly low cost. You know, KCK, you know, is clamoring to figure out how to access the river. We do have an operator that I think might have some interest in that area and folks that know this part of the county as well. It's gonna take a little bit more time to kind of figure all of that out, but I do think that that location is interesting in the way that it could be an access point and be an interesting way to attract people into the community, be an entrance way to the community as a whole, but also sort of soften the approach into the industrial park as well. So we're still, we're still working through that one. You all did a nice job of putting a TIF on that to begin with, so we have something to show developers when they come in that, hey, here's how this would work. But that TIF is continuing to burn down every year, so there's, there is a timestamp on that as well. So then I just kind of wanted to point out that sometimes we think kind of inwardly, I get caught in this trap as well of, I've got these sites, I've got these locations, this is what I want to do. And then somebody reminds me that we're not a vacuum. And so I wanted to at least highlight some of the competition that we have, primarily when I look at 110th Street, because that's sort of the big spot, right? It's gotta be done eventually the right way. Where we drive the retail that you want, the kinds of projects you want. So I kind of highlighted just at a high level, I mean, there are probably another half dozen major projects going on just in the Johnson-Wyandotte area, not counting the Missouri side, where, shoot, they'll do it 95% for 20 years. But just on the Kansas side, I highlighted a handful of these projects that you all have read about in the Business Journal and others. But, you know, one, I think it's interesting to look at the price tags of these projects and just how expensive it is. So what you're suggesting to a developer is that you're gonna give them certainty, that you're gonna figure out how to offset some amount of this. And it's taking a whole litany of incentives to piece these projects together. So none of these projects are doing just a incentive anymore. They're doing multiple things layered on top of each other to solve for different parts of the financial package and different parts of these sort of mixed-use projects. And one of the things to highlight is that almost every one of these are mixed-use, whether it's tourism, hospitality, retail, apartments, and then whatever the tourism component is. Almost every one of these have that same sort of makeup. And so one of the challenges that we have had a little bit of is really understanding how much, when we say mixed-use, particularly up at 110th Street, what does that look like for you all? Does that include multifamily? Does that include townhomes? Does that include duplexes? When we talk to developers about mixed-use, they almost always throw in some level of multifamily type of product in that. And we've been just a little bit skittish on committing to that, because that's not exactly what we've heard. But there may be room for a very small amount of it in a particular area. And we just need to get probably some clarity on that. We know that once we get to the south side of River View in particular, we believe that that is largely gonna be single-family, and that's what we hear anyway. But I just want to kind of point that out. You know, Bantel, even in Bonner Springs, has finally come across the line. I think there's still, you know, steps to take, but that project does seem to not be moving forward. The Bonner Springs folks just approved the Starbond District and all the The Bonner Springs folks just approved the Starbond District and all the funding for that just maybe less than a month ago. And then Home Field continues to grow really to the east of 435. I think you'll still see some things coming in on the west side of 435 and the north side. I think you'll see some additional activity around the Hollywood Casino. That, once they get their hotel going, I think there'll be more that kind of fans out from that in that mixed use realm. But a lot of it, I think, depends too on the timing of some of the sports stuff. But just kind of wanted to put this out there because you all are in the center of that. And what we do there is going to have to be there for a very, very long time. And we're familiar with that too. We want it to be right. And sometimes it does seem like it takes a little longer, but we'd rather wait for the right project than do the wrong project and just race into it. Those bondholders are challenging, so challenging. All right. And that's really the end of it. You know, I think the only other maybe policy thing I would throw out there, and we've mentioned this to Mark recently is you all used to have a neighborhood revitalization area, area. And that was largely along K 32. That doesn't have to be along K 32. Could be a residential, having more conversation about what you all want to do with that program, if anything. You just can't cover the entire city. Bonner is in the process of renewing theirs. KCK is in the process of renewing theirs. So it might be time to revisit that as well and to see what version you like. And then also, I think as housing comes in, I think that they'll certainly be asking about RHID. That's that residential housing investment district. You all have one already, but I think that that's one of the things that could be at play as we look at larger lot, single family residential on the south side is what, what does that play in? So if you guys have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Greg, do you see any, what are you predicting for like any kind of an impact when the pipe comes in there with the soccer?
Yeah.
Are we, is Edwardsville going to be able to benefit from that? Do we have any?
I think it's
Bonner Chamber, Bonner Edwardsville Chamber Board. It's pretty exciting with that, but I'm not seeing that Edwardsville got any kind of allure to capitalize on any of those funds that could be coming in from all around the world.
Sure.
Has that been into any kind of consideration with 435?
We do have a role to play, but I'll answer your question first and then I'll tell you what our role is, just specifically to us. I think Bonner Springs, Edwardsville stands to benefit from 600 and some thousand folks coming into the market. I think where there is heavy retail and things for people to do is probably going to benefit more than, than where you don't. I mean, I don't think our industrial park is going to have any impact unless they're making some sort of tchotchke varsity. Your book may be making something that could get sold out in the marketplace or printing something that gets sold that could help ramp up production. Or if INX is, you know, printing onto cans because they're going to see more of those sold. Those are, you know, things could, could ramp up here in Edwardsville for sure. You're anybody who has a, an Airbnb or rental property, those folks could see some significant traffic. If you all have policies in place around that, it's probably time to be thinking about that or ramping those up. You know, we've, we've had a lot of conversations with our small business groups. So we've, we've reached out to frankly, almost all the restaurants, I think, in Bonner and Edwardsville and KCK, as many of them as we could possibly get our hands on. It's a little bit out of our normal scope. We're typically, you know, in your offices and in your larger developments. But we, we did develop a, a database of a lot of restaurants and emails so that we could keep them informed about what was going on with the World Cup, but also to make sure that they were, you know, if there were things that KCK or even the greater FIFA group in Kansas City could bid on, they were at least being informed about how to be able to do that. Now, our part has really been focused on, on creating that database, keeping them informed, you know, all the way down to an example in KCK, small businesses who have security cameras can wire them into the KCK Police Department. Well, that's a safety issue so that, you know, if something were to happen, we'd like to have as many of those businesses connected with the police department as we can, not just for, for a World Cup. That's a sustainable piece of it. So we've tried to have an eye for what are investments and things we could do or bring forward that aren't just for World Cup, but have a lasting impact. Because I, I don't have the kind of money it takes to hire somebody to manage a bunch of World Cup stuff. So one of the other big ticket items, I suppose, we're doing here is Monica Breedy, who's our Vice President of Business Solutions and Workforce Issues. We do those pathway, the student career pathway tours that we already do with the Bonner Springs School District and Piper and all of them. So we are identifying those small businesses, particularly restaurants, in each of those school districts that have indicated to us that they don't have a great website. Maybe they're not really thinking about how to do special deals. How do you, how do you lure them in? And we're trying to connect them with a marketing professional, so whether that's our marketing firm or, you know, a series of others, get them into a cohort so that they've got interactions with an actual marketing firm and then work on a projects, projects for these small businesses where they can help them with social media content, a new website, making sure they have a, a web presence. Because if you're not on us, you know, the internet on Google, nobody's going to your place of business. And so those are the kinds of things that we're putting together, which is, seemed like a good idea when we first came up with it. Now that we're getting closer, you realize just how much logistics there are and getting all these various kids and classrooms and teachers. But because we already had that relationship set up with the tours, it's kind of, it's starting to come together. We just, just got to make sure it's a good experience for the kids so that they end up with a good real world learning experience, which is what Kaufman is really after. And that they can end up potentially with a capstone project to say, look, this is what we did for this business and, and follow it all the way through and actually have something that's tangible at the end of the day. And so to your point, it may not always be a direct connection to, you know, just this, you know, a business or this barbecue place, which they should all do fine. But if we were able to help that business to have a social media presence and say, hey, look, if you want to come in and get a, you know, brown bag lunch, or you want to do this, or you want this kind of barbecue, or, you know, just come out and visit, you know, the potato capital. Then that, I think, is as useful as anything to make sure that those kids have a really good experience with this. And hopefully along the way, we figure out a way to get some swag and some other stuff for them. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
I think the Chamber was thinking about using the TikTok for a month and a half. I'm old and I don't understand what TikTok is. You need to get on TikTok because you can really find out a lot of stuff. Anyway, I guess whoever the younger people know what that is.
I won't disagree with you, Councilmember. We have a TikTok account as well. We have a group that does that. I don't understand those TikToks. They don't say what I think they should say, but they run, you know, with this, it all seems strange to me. But we get lots of likes and lots of people watch it. I'm like, okay, keep doing it. That's why we're paying to do it.
Missing out when you make something look fun, put it on social media. They want to come engage. They want to come and do what other people do.
So that's why, that's what they tell me. I just always think, I don't understand why, one of our biggest hit ones was somebody put Sina's head on a rolling office chair in one of our videos somehow got connected. And people went wild over, over this actor, you know, guy rolling around an office chair, talking about getting a job in Wyandotte County. And I didn't get it, but lots of kids left it.
Another comment I wanted to ask your opinion on is, and I make this comment at every council meeting, council portion or whatever. We have cranes, bulldozers, asphalt trucks, concrete trucks, all around us. We have nothing here. What kind of an issue or what kind of a problem is causing people to kind of bypass Edwardsville? And just not even look at it? I mean, I understand the lawsuit up there for the Hard Rock was going to be, I understand that was a problem. But why would that stop the rest of that area up there? I think there's three lots up there. What is stopping?
Uncertainty.
We're watching Bucce's go in. Evidently a hotel is going in where the, where the casino was supposed to put one in. We put sewer up there. We're ready to go. Where Bonner Springs is using our sewer, Kansas City, Kansas City. I don't think that anybody in Edwardsville is flushing the stool and it's going to that sewer. And that's really disappointing. It seems to me like the ball's really getting dropped somewhere. Is it getting dropped up here? Is it getting dropped Wyandotte County, EDC? Where, where, what kind of a problem do you see with that? What's a good solution for that? We're missing out on a lot of good things that could happen.
Well, hopefully we're not dropping the ball. So I don't know where it's going to drop that, but hopefully it's on us. But we take our cues from you all and what, what we think you all want. So yes, you could do development up there, but it may not be the projects that you really, really want as a, as a long-term investment. The biggest issue up north is uncertainty. So we always focus on certainty, choice and consistency. Certainty that they can get control of the land, to know who their, their neighbor is going to be. And right now you don't have that, right? That is the biggest uncertainty that you have up there, whether it's east or west of, of 110th Street. Now, east of 110th Street, you actually, you know, you have Billy's South Parkway already in place. You don't have that on the west side. Well, I could tell you to go stub that in, but if you don't know exactly where to stub it to, you could end up building a road for no good, good reason, and now you've got a cost. And, you know, you could, you could start putting in the infrastructure in any number of locations through a benefit district or through, you know, your own bonds. But again, that's, that's a, that's a big expense. And so what we keep trying to figure out is, well, what's the right developer to come in? And, you know, housing has been another challenge, right? You could say, well, let's just jump over River View and start building houses and we could set that all up. Well, I would tell you the biggest challenge there is that you don't have sewer. But I don't think you want to go out and start building sewer just right away. Maybe you do. If you do, great. We'll, we'll get that ramped up and we'll go find the developers. But we have to find a developer in this market. So you've had high interest rates, high cost, high construction costs. And there are lots of locations that are building houses that could do it cheaper. And so we're, it just takes some time to make that work. And I, I don't always like work time myself, but it is a time issue. It's a time and money problem. If you've got plenty of time, you have plenty of money, you can do just about anything. But when either one of those two are in short supply, then they're going to find a place that they can do that project with more certainty. And up north, you, you just have a lot of uncertainty. That's why I kind of showed you that map because there's a reason why each one of those sites have been delayed. Because we have to solve for the challenges that are there. And we developed the industrial, industrial park over the last, you know, 10, 15 years and to huge success and did it really, really fast by rights. Because the infrastructure was there, you had the interchange, there was certainty about what the land was going to be and what you wanted. And so it was, it was easy. I mean, our only constraint in the industrial park was frankly, how heavy was the infrastructure use, right? We knew that there were some capacity limits to what we could do. But if it fell within a certain parameter, you guys were just on it. We knew how it was going to be financed. We knew what the incentives would look like. We knew what the butt four test would be. These other locations, it's taken a little bit more time. And I don't want to keep blaming the bondholders, but that's probably the one group that nobody knows really how to get hold of them. Nobody really feels like they can reach out to them and they hold the cards. And so until they either sell that property and hopefully if they do, it's on the market. So if somebody buys that property, I do hope that they understand whether or not they're supposed to repay any of those outstanding funds. That's still a big question mark about, you know, are they walking away from that property and saying, look, we're taking a loss? Or are they leaving it in place that somehow or another they owe money even after they buy the land? And that, that's hard to do because every dollar that comes off that project, a new developer is going to want, you know, as much of that increment as possible. And if they think they have to give any of that to somebody they just bought the land from, they're not going to do it.
The other, I do, I don't know if this is a total secret or what, but what's the rumor on the Chiefs? Have you said the Chiefs possibility?
Sure. So I'm not giving anything away. This just came out on what, Friday? The Chiefs announced that they've asked for, I think they wanted to come in with like 10 RF proposals from folks to show what a domed 65,000 seat stadium would look like on the north side, Speedway property. And then they will, will that down to two. It'll be on the north side of I 70. It's most likely Speedway property. That's the, let's face it, that's
I mean, the rumors, the rumors are out there.
Oh, sure. There's lots of rumors. They don't own any of the land right now, so that's not true. And the Hunt family doesn't own a bunch of property out there. But at the end of the day, that location, based on all the other site location factors I showed you, we know we have the land. We know that you can do 80,000 at one time. NASCAR folks running through that interchange, so we know we can handle the traffic. We know that location has enough infrastructure capacity to handle a project like that. And we know that there's all these other projects in that area that sort of blend with it. So it still becomes a financial question of, is there enough money to be derived from that development and the development that will be required to be around it in order to repay those bonds? Very expensive project, you know, over that 30-year period. And, and then how does that connect to any other pieces and parts that they may be looking at along with that project? It's exciting, but I would tell you that we go at it sort of cautiously optimistic because it has to be a net revenue generator to the county and to the community, or we shouldn't do it.
It seems impossible to be, if you like.
I think there are a lot of smart people trying to figure out different ways to model that and figure out how to, how to make that project pencil out. I think it's a, it'd be an interesting asset. It would lend itself to the sports sort of theme that we have out there. And it certainly attracts a different, you know, branding and, and persona to the county to have, you know. We're very much NFL region, right? So we love the Royals, but everybody seems to really be fascinated with NFL.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of time. I remember when I was on the council before all of that Speedway. I was at a Chamber of KCK or Wyandotte Development meeting at the golf course over by the junior college.
Oh, Painted Hills?
They were talking NASCAR International Speedway Corporation said, that will never happen. Wyandotte County can't listen. They had to grow on that because two or three years later, they bought NASCAR. We have NASCAR race up there now twice a year, American one. I don't think that the Chiefs stadium 50 out of the question of being able to happen.
It's just a series of math problems.
The other, the reason I ask all these questions is because I think that, I think somebody should ask these questions of you. And I, I do it, but I kind of knew the answers to most, most of these. It, it cleans up a lot of things in my own mind. But I think it helps the people that are out in the audience right now, when they hear this stuff, they can kind of hear the explanation and some of the things that are happening around here and that there is work being done.
Every day.
I appreciate that you have come for this. I was basically the request that you come, Red Burrows and sites and Melissa Bydon were here a couple of meetings ago. They gave us some information, but I think your information is trumped. I appreciate you taking the time to answer my little question.
However, we can help. Thank you. We appreciate your team and, and the relationship of Mayor K R is on our board. And so we appreciate that. And we'll, we'll, we'll support you guys however we can and give you, I think, honest feedback. And then vice versa, we're always open to your feedback. However, we can help.
I think we're good. Thank you so much for coming this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg.
Item number seven, consider approving resolution 202518, adopting Wyandotte County Emergency Operations Plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, we have before you the background information, but more importantly, Matt May, emergency management here presents. You're carried with him, it's very large books, which is the reason you don't have this entire thing in front of you.
That's correct. Nor do I. So this is about half of it. But, but I wanted to have it for anybody who cared to look at it. I can leave this copy behind if you like. But what we're really trying to do is do our annual, every five years, we do a major overhaul on this. The state was kind enough to change the planning standards, therefore we had to go early. And so I think we're only about three years into this cycle, but in theory, we'll do this every five years. Emergency Operations Plan is an outline for how we're going to respond during an event. It's broken by 15, has base plan, and then it has 15 subsections we refer to as ESFs or Support Functions. And that is a collection of different potential responders and providers and resources who often work together. And it's a federal kind of framework that we work with. It's flexible. If we wanted to add something to it, we could, but we really haven't seen a need to do that. So it's pretty much the standard format. So it's 15 subsections. So, it's 15 subsections. Subordinate to that, there's a whole bunch of annexes and other documents that we've referenced or whatever, like that's the part you don't see tonight. So, there's two more ring binders that go with this. But this is the base plan and the 15 subsections, annexes. And what we have brought to you is, and I think you've all been provided the copies in advance, so you've had an opportunity to look at it. This is an opportunity for us to answer any questions you might have. The biggest changes are ESF 14 was originally, yeah, long-term recovery. And what the feds have asked us to do is build a separate recovery plan, which we actually did before the state even had theirs done. So, we did that two years ago. So, now what we have in there is about partnerships with infrastructure and private industry to make sure that that piece, that relationship building, that, making sure that we have resources from them that they might be able to provide or vice versa. If they need resources, we can give that to them. And for this folks around here particularly, making sure that the transportation infrastructure is up and running so that these businesses continue to run and trucks can come and go and do all the things that we need to do to keep this community flourishing and bringing it back to whatever, if it's been impacted by a disaster. So, we do that. The other part of this is, this allows us to be able to support any requests for reimbursements that you might have. If you want to do a declaration locally, you can. And I'm more than happy to support that and get it processed through the state and then be able to, there's a big impact. Like recently for us, it's been the July flood. We had just a relatively small area of KCK, but hugely impacted. And we had 20 feet of water standing in places where there's usually no flood. And so, cars were washed out of parking lots. We had two people that we thought we were going to lose. Fortunately, they both crawled out of the flooded car and were able to rescue themselves, even though we were looking for them. Turns out, they were already crawled out and sitting on the bank, which was great. But there's other bigger resource management that needs to be done. And so, that's what, that's the major change in this document, is that that 14 has become that other piece now, that infrastructure management and relationship building with private entities. And that's where Jennifer, who has joined our office recently, comes with a ton of experience doing that for the state of Wisconsin. And, but she's a lifelong daughter for most part, except for those little forays up into the part of God country where I used to live for a little bit. So, anybody have questions? I'm happy to take them. We can go into it in some detail if you like, but generally speaking, this is not a detailed document. This is designed to give us a concept for goals and objectives, not necessarily a tactical document. That's something we provide, you know, the fire department, police department, they're the ones who are going to have the tactics. We're just going to give, we're going to come to you and say, please tell us what you'd like to see done. There's a couple of things that are always on that list, right? Life safety, property protection, those are the kinds of goals that typically come out of a response. And then, we'll start to add in details about what you'd like to see finished. Don't let the town flood, whatever. And then, how we do that, we go back to the experts. We ask them, how would you do this? That's the goal of this mission. So, I'm happy to answer questions.
That was going to be my question. Has this, any feedback come from our chiefs or?
Chief Whittem is here, and he's our emergency management director for the city.
So, with you?
Yes. I've met Jennifer a month ago or so. We're invited to all the planning meetings downtown as we build the plans out. So, we are very much active and involved in the EOP plan through the planning process and then constant email reminders from Matt, Jennifer, and everything else about what changes are occurring and so forth. I'd like to remind the council while I'm up here, five years ago, six years ago, was a storm event in the summertime that, you know, we declared a local disaster here that occurred over the loss of the bridge at Buds Creek and a few other places as well. So, this is what this whole entire plan does, is we funnel everything up every storm, information up to Matt, said, hey, you know, we were impacted here. It may not be enough for us as an individual municipality to declare an emergency, but he looks at it as the county side as well and gets that pushed through the governor for an emergency. And we've had several of those to where we were on that threshold. We didn't have enough by ourselves, or water didn't have enough by ourselves, or KCK didn't have enough. But it's a collaborative effort, then all of a sudden, we meet the planners for a federal declared emergency. Repairs at Buds Creek were one of the examples of where they look at the EOP declaration process, are signing off on it and go prepare, just like the generator project that's come through is from the mitigation side. It's all tied into federal funding everywhere else.
If you look at, in the background information, which I sent in as well, preparation for the meeting, they give you about 23 of these changes. If you look at the flow chart change, reference to radiological instruments, title change, or they're eliminated completely because they're outdated. That's really what this function's at. As Mr. May indicated, there's only one new, and that's number 14 ESF. So, all the changes, these are things that every three, five years, the terms change or lessons learned, but frankly, and you know, the standards have changed. Sometimes administration changes, they want something else done at the federal level. It's passed down to the state, the county, cities. And that's what this does. It gives you a full list of these maybe simple things. If you talk about, well, what's a PSAP? Well, that's 911, when they reference a PSAP, Public Safety Answer. Right? So, there's just a little note about, hey, we have to do these things because that's the new regulation. So, it's, in a sense, it's pretty daunting, but it's actually simply complex. There are the experts on it. Tim is our local, Chief Whittem is our local expert on some of these incident management. And again, part of what he does is tactical, part of what you do is just that emergency management administration. We have all these components, fairly, can be fairly complex, but that's what the books are for, right? And that's what we have. So, you look at these, about 23-ish of these kind of updates changed, very simple things that just because of time and maybe just process-wise changes had to be amended. And as you stated, amended early, this is a five-year cycle usually. And should it, do you think that will return to a five-year after this kind of quick change?
Yes.
2029 is our next week. So, if you're around in 2029, you get that here again.
So, we'd be agreeing to something until 2029 that we've not read the whole document?
You're certainly welcome to read the whole document. Yeah, the thing is, as you said, that's not even a portion in a sense.
I tried really hard to get the cage count down. Jennifer did a great job of coming up with that, so to speak. But quite honestly, we have to address all answers and all possibilities. And that's hard to do without having to build up to say, for this kind of, have these some kinds of things. Again, it's not tactical, it's not we're going to put this, you know, this footstep and that's footstep. It's a, here's the goal, here's the problem, here's the goal, here's the outcome. Here's what we want to do. For example, economic recovery. That's a key piece. And we know that getting the finances back is just as important as these recent. And so, there's some guidelines about how to do that. That one's probably overstating. There's some guidance about how we can accomplish that. And you're absolutely spot-on correct about working with the state. They have some thinking ideas at times, and we try to make sure we can help navigate those waters, their thresholds to be hit. This most recent event, the July 17 event for us, we were not there. We have a threshold for the county of almost a million damage that we can talk about getting reimbursed. That's a challenge. That's probably twice what it was when I started doing this here. So, if there's ways to get that done, just as an example, I reached out to my colleagues on all northeast Kansas. Not everybody was hit as badly as you were. They had some damages, most of it was something they couldn't sort themselves, but those dollars fall apart. So, I asked my brothers to go to this, write that up, send that to the state, even though you're not going to qualify, you know, you're not going to make their thresholds. That helped us get our threshold. Now, that document is right this minute, sitting in presence. We haven't gotten a signature, but it's been very slow since I'm on this. You're supposed to do them every 30 days, and right now, I think it's not. I like that. It's been a challenging time there. So, but hopefully we get approval. We made it at least past the thresholds. Now, they have to decide if we've done, we can do, done the maintenance. That's another thing to caution you about. Make sure you're doing the maintenance most likely. I know KCK guys are doing it, but they weren't documenting it. They got some new software now, they can explain every dollar, every dime, every hour of time that they've spent. And that goes, that helps, one, make the numbers better, as far as being more accurate. And two, it gives us a written demonstrable document that we can get back to them. And that last process that we went through with their representatives over the July 17 So, and we're getting the same thing for you.
I understand the work, and thank you for trying to, for lack of a better word, to dumb it down for us or shorten it so that we can understand it and not have to go through the documents. But I actually would like to go through the documents. So, I'm going to make the motion to table this until we can. I don't want to agree to anything that we've not looked at completely. I think that's not wise to do. So, yeah, I'm going to make the motion to table this until we can. And if anybody else wants to look at the documents, I don't know how many more, what the size of that is.
Okay, so that is going to be almost 500-plus pages that you're going to go through that are not shaws, they're shoulds, so they're strong recommendations. To give you an example, one of them being transportation. Something happens on a state highway, Edwardsville, then Wyandotte County or the UG, and then KDOT, depending upon how the roadway affects to it. So, it's like the Buds Creek incident was a public works problem for the city of Edwardsville first. It's just like if we have an antihydras ammonia leak at Lening's Logistics. At first, it starts as an Edwardsville problem. We're going to sit there and call the hazmat team from Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department, who we already have a working relationship with. It's not a bunch of shaws that are locked into it. It simply says, who's going to be the primary responder when you get down to the plan? And it's based off of the local jurisdiction, because if you want to see it, a lot of times, it's the city of Edwardsville Public Works, the Edwardsville Police Department, the Edwardsville Fire Department. And then, when you get into the large scale, like let's say we, Lord forbid, have another pandemic, it refers right back to the Health Department. That's why we've sat there, and part of these plans have points of distribution, and that's tested, I think, monthly. So, I will be more than glad to give you my copy. It's going to be several hours, several hours. But you have the right to do it. I'm just letting you know that there's not anything in there that says that we have to always abide by it. It's just a general footprint that your husband would understand, Mr. Bloom would understand. It's a general guidance that just says, here you go. We know you're going to be overwhelmed, find the help you needed at, contact and activate the EOC, because he has the shopping list that we're not required to try to keep here in our rolodex here. Besides, he has a staff that can sit there and activate 35 people, I think, in EOC.
Oh, yeah.
There's 15 ESFs and usually, yeah. So, you know, like I said, I will give you my copy that I've got. We leave it silent. It's not a problem at all.
Thank you.
No, I've got a copy. You've got the official copy here.
Okay.
You can sit here and look at it.
Again, I'm more than happy with this one.
I think that would be really helpful, especially if there's a, if there's a red line, that'll make it even simpler to outline what changes have been made.
This one does not have it. It's a printed version, but we can do that.
That would be fantastic. Could you send, like, could you email that?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
It will be in pieces. Let me print you one. And we will turn that review back on so that we can see what's been struck.
That would be great.
Over the last time. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, parliamentary-wise, here we have.
We have a motion.
We have a motion that says we're, we're to table the item for review of documents.
So, we just need a second.
I'll second it if you want to look at it. I'll second.
Move a motion from Councilman Arkansas, the second from Councilman Mullen. Will the third please call roll?
We have paid professionals that do this. I vote no.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And just to kind of give my little bit on that, I didn't talk too much, and I'm not going to keep this too long, because we've been here a while, but we ultimately are responsible for everything we pass in the city. So, it is pretty important that we know what in the world we're passing. So, anytime a member wants to do due diligence and read over that, I think that's really important. We'll do that.
Matt May, if I can, we will offer our services. Come and sit and go through it with you.
Oh.
I don't wish you, you took, we're famous for acronyms and terminology. And once it's explained, you go, oh, okay. That, we're, we got that.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
As an aside, I thought that would be a good opportunity for a work session.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and invite them back. So, you've got the background, right? Parliamentary-wise, I've said this before, it's okay to table things and do your due diligence. The timing worked for us to get it before you, and now you might have even more questions and you can clarify them even before he comes in next season.
A good place to start. Thank you very much. Item number, oh, sorry. Thank you. That would be wonderful. Thank you. Keep it safe.
I would.
Item eight, consider award of bid for solid waste and recycling collection services, authorizing city manager to execute all necessary agreements and documents related thereto.
Mayor, council, thank you. You have the background information before you, and Mr. Gerber will-
Governing body, good evening. As the city manager said, we do have the background information before you. I would also point out that we have a representative from KC disposal in the audience if you have some very specific questions about anything. Just not to repeat things too much, but we did issue an RFP. We received three responses. One of those was actually no response. They said thanks, but were not finding to respond. The contracts that you have in your packet is largely the same as what has been previously adopted. The major change, I would say, relates to the financials of the contract in the sense that the contract does include, does include a monthly administrative fee as well as language that says the city will only repay it for what we collect rather than the entire amount as has previously been done. So, we've made that change. I think we heard that from this body, that that was an appropriate change, and so, that's included in the contract. For 2026, the residential rates remain static at 2125, so you won't see a change for that. And with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
A couple. One is over the last several months, Councilman Schreiber, and I had asked about incorporating the mobile home part into our agreement. I believe they're also customers of KC disposal, and so, usually with the bulk pricing, it seems like that would give us, it'd be favorable for both us and the mobile home part.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Yes, that is correct. Oh, my name is Matt Gibson. I am one of the owners of KC disposal. That is correct. We do service the mobile home park, and they're very tough to get in touch with. It's been a rough ride for us. We purchased a lot of customers from Republic. That is who currently, well, did service the mobile home park. So, we've been doing our due diligence servicing them, but getting ahold of the building department, it's very, very tough. So, they use a property management company, and it's very hard to get ahold of them. Maybe you guys have had the same issues when you guys tried to pair them together. Would it be a great idea? Yes, if we could do it, we'd be up for that.
So, you already service some of them?
We service the whole mobile home park, but it's a separate contract that we purchased from Republic.
Yeah, I know in the past, we've asked them.
Yeah. Yeah.
12 years, 12 years, and it's not meant every year, but when we've asked them to join and they declined.
Maybe they were at KC disposal before this year. And every, and this is one thing, is it gets really confusing when we do our spring cleanups and things like that. It seems very exclusive, almost, and this isn't to do with you guys.
Yeah.
But the mobile home community says, well, why aren't we included? We can't bring our stuff to the, well, because they're not part of our building, and so, it's not included in that. So, just community-wise, it would seem beneficial, price-wise, probably beneficial to probably give us about 20% or so increase in our households.
Yeah, it did. We did bid it the same. Currently, that contract is bid pretty cheaply. Again, they've been tough to get in touch with, and so, we've been trying to work that out with them. But we did bid it exactly the same. In years past, we have bid it cheaper, but with the new changes in the contract, we did bid it the same.
So I mean, I would say that part of the RFP did include, if that was added, respondents were asked to provide a price release. We do have that. It's just not part of the.
So would it be a price decrease for everyone if we put them together?
Price for the business stays the same.
No, so we bid it, because you guys did give us the option to bid it both ways, it would be the same, even if we had the extra households again. Reason being, we have to buy all new cards. That's five hundred to thousand cards. No, those are Republic cards.
Oh, you're using Republic.
Yeah, so when we purchase that.
There's no reason for us to take that on if it's not beneficial. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, I read through the contract. I was just, it's just a couple of things with our concern how it had worked before is the city would pay for every single household, even if nobody was living in the house. No trash was being picked up from the house or they were getting linked with bills. And so one thing that I noticed in one D is it says if the, it's considered occupied, if there's water or any energy going to the home, but there are a lot of properties that are just being built potentially or being flipped, new construction that have utilities going to the home several months before anyone's living there. So I don't know if we want to adjust that for our household numbers at all.
They don't determine that.
Okay.
So we would tell them that it's added to the list. Yeah, so if there's a hundred and we got one more, we got a hundred and one.
And when will we lock in our household number? That wasn't, it was just estimated in here.
The contract says that on or before thirty days before the start of the contract. It'll be in the next couple of weeks.
A service fee, let's see. A and D kind of overlap a little bit. A seems as if we're paying per household, no matter if they pay us or not, in section five, service fee. It's, the city is only responsible, this is the city is responsible for payment. I don't have the exact. It looks like it repeats the same verbiage from the contract, from the previous contract. And then when you get to D where it's supposed to solidify that we're only remitting payment, it doesn't actually say only, it just says shall provide billing services for solid waste collections. And it doesn't specify that we're only responsible for payments that we receive and that we're not responsible for payments that we do not receive. It's not outlined very well in that.
I mean, we can certainly make that more clear. The third sentence is meant to reflect that where it says the city shall remit funds received to the selected contractor on a monthly basis. That, that's in addition to the contract. And that's, that's on five D.
Five D, yeah, that's right.
That's what it's supposed to imply.
Right.
We can certainly be more clear about that.
Yeah, I think maybe if it said the city should, would only be responsible for remitting payments as received or something along those, because it doesn't limit it. It says we will remit everything we've received, but not that we're not responsible for anything that we don't receive.
Let's say that the city will only remit the funds that are collected.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Yeah, that was the intent of that language was to say this. Let's go back to history. We were billed one hundred percent of all collections. Then we collected whatever we collected at one point, fifty four percent. And what we were doing is paying a hundred percent here and not receiving. So essentially what we're trying to fix is something we all identify that's not the problem with the business is that we will remit a hundred percent of what we collect. That's the intent.
Right. I think I would just, I'd like to add something that says and would not be responsible for any payment that's not remitted to the city. Because if you read A, then we're responsible for every household. And then when you get to D, it says we're remitting the payments we receive. But I, just to clear that up, just to make sure it's really evident that we, not only are we not remitting payment that we don't give, but we're not responsible for those payments. That whose responsibility is that, that we're kind of just brokering the payment between one to the other.
You're paying reference to the B.
B A. And then the last thing, I just didn't know if it was specified on the five percent administration fee. Are they actually paying us every month or are we deducting it from what we pay them?
You know, that is not specified in here. So we could also make that.
That was all, that was in a nutshell, everything that I could. We just want clarity on, but it, I think those are pretty simple, pretty simply solved, so. So would you prefer, yeah, that's what I was going to ask. So what would we?
Well, I think the, I think we understand what the intent is and I think the vendor understands what we're trying to do. So we can, we can work with the city attorney for the saws, this language that gets to that intent. So essentially with, with the suggested changes, we could adopt this, should we so choose, with these changes that were suggested. However, you want to make the motions.
So how would you want me to say that?
You're asking me what I want you to say?
Well, I mean, how, how should I say that?
But I think it does give the city manager the ability, so.
It surely does. And what I, what I would, my narrative would be, if you adopt this, you're giving me signing authority and to negotiate that. And I'll work with both Mr. Gerber and Mr. Nye to work that out and then re-submit. That language is clear enough to everybody and they can accept it. We can award that still and any vendor can reject it. So that's, that's still sort of in play. So your intent then is to direct me to continue negotiations based on this language that was proposed in that we want to make it clear, if I understand it right, that, that the city will pay the vendor the amount collected on a monthly basis. So whatever the proper verbiage, is that what that intent of the motion would be? It was suggested by the mayor, that's what it would be. So whatever your motion, that should be your intent.
So just verification changes?
Well, it wouldn't it say, because it's, execute all necessary agreements and documents related thereto. I mean, that should be good then, right?
Josh, you got a talk in the mic?
But I mean, that's what it says, right? The motion says that, I mean, it should be clear, right?
Josh, did you have?
Josh, what do you think? Okay, so I'll.
So if I can give a recommended motion.
Sure.
So I think the motion would be to authorize, move to authorize the city manager to enter in an agreement. Authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Casey Disposal, solid waste recycling agreement conditioned upon changes as discussed at the council meeting, being acceptable to both parties and subject to final legal review.
They still moved? Wait, hold on, you're going to have to walk me through this. So authorize, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract agreement with Casey Disposal. Conditioned to the changes or?
Conditioned upon.
Conditioned upon.
Both parties agreeing to the changes discussed at the city council meeting.
Both parties agreeing to the changes discussed at the city council, city council meeting.
And subject to final legal.
And subject to final legal review. We're good?
So we have a motion and a second. Second, move a motion from Councilman Adcox, a second from Councilman Everhart. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Casey Disposal has been a great partner in our community. It's been a good business relationship. And so we appreciate you being here and love to support business right here in Network still.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Council. Have a great night.
Item number nine, consider authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Piper Sandler and for the continuation of financial advisory services.
Now, we have background information before you. This doesn't date, the term is upon closing of financing. This discussion about go out for competitive bids and we did not, in this instance, it is a reason, as you know, we've already issued them to some twenty six. We have temporary notes, temporary terms, permanent financing. They're already doing a lot of work on that. It's about the timing of the contract now that will expire at the end of the year and you don't want, and it's kind of like engineering, somebody who does sixty five percent of the engineering on a street doesn't want to just hand it over to another engineer because they repeat the work. So then you pay for it again. So essentially, our relationship with Piper and our financial advisory service, they're well underway. And we're talking to legal counsel, which is our bond counsel. And what I would suggest here is that we continue the contract and you just, if you want to limit that and not go through twenty twenty eight, that you limit to one year and then we can go out for requests for proposals competitive by this time next year.
So would that just say authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Piper Sandler and Co. For the continuation of financial services through twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty six. That would do it if that's so be it. They've been really good. We just had a really good relationship with them and we've been with them quite some time. We did in the past use Baker Tilly. But since we've gone to what was Piper Jaffrey in the past, we've had a pretty good relationship. So they're doing really good work and they're, they're well advanced in the work that we charge them to do in the sense of turning our, our temporary financing into permanent bonds. That includes our street projects or street maintenance. So you'll be, in the next few months, you'll be entertaining that to hopefully have the money by March eight. That's what we're talking.
All right. I make the motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Piper Sandler and company for the continuation of financial advisory services through twenty twenty six. Second, motion from Councilman Notcox, second from Councilman Shriver. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number ten, consider a word of bid for the demolition of structures located at ten two fifty North Hundredth and Street and authority, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary agreements and documents related thereto.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, you have the background information on number ten. This is demolition of two ten North Hundredth and Street. A longstanding item for us, the Vine Yellow House. So we, we went through all the processes. You have that in your background. I'm not going to repeat that. But in a sense, we went out for bids. We delayed some of those bids only because there was asbestos mitigation that needed to be assessed. And the contractors didn't want to put that on themselves. So we commissioned, the city commissioned an expert to go and assess the asbestos. Once we knew what that level was, we could put it back out for the bid so that they could include it in their full bid. And that's what's happened here. And we had one disqualified bid. Didn't meet one third of what conditions were. So Rimco at twenty nine, nine sixty is the lowest and or best bid. And they are also, I know, is there, they're our, they're subcontractor, Vogel Anderson on our, our building, on the fire department.
Call Valley located.
That is Call Valley Companies, Call Valley Sand, Call Valley Construction. That is in Edwardsville, Wyandotte County. Is it a possibility?
No, the liability and the risk to it is too great because the structure's too far gone. We looked at that initially, it's the first part, but it is too far. There ought to be any benefits.
Why wouldn't we use the Edwardsville company?
We don't have a standing policy of any percentage. We have the lowest investment. So we start with the lowest and the best. You can modify those things, but our, our financial policy says we take the lowest investment.
Typically though, we'll ask up here, just like Councilman Malot asked, will any of these Wyandotte County companies? And very rarely do we have the opportunity to actually support a Wyandotte County company. Especially forty dollars, yeah.
It's up to you. We have a standing policy and we've submitted the lowest investment. So if you choose to have a different one, you may do so.
Are the services the same? Apples to apples on the services?
I would presume that they would be. I mean, bid wise, right? Yeah, they, the specifications, they met the qualifications and the criteria in the bid. So you tear the house down and make that, make the property whole again in a sense of level.
Yes, I move to offer the contract to Call Valley Companies for thirty thousand dollars.
Second. So, okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Malot, a second from Councilman Mullen, closely followed by a third. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes, if you need the forty dollars, I'll pay it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Put note on Call Valley. Wyandotte County, we went out for site bids for the fire department. Policy with Vogel Anderson that they get selected over, as long as it was originally closed bid. And that's what called out, they had some of that. So whomever fires class, some of these other folks that we know, they're, they're on their subcontractor list and were hired. So that was a fire notice. But again, we don't, and I think Mr. Shriver has said that before, we didn't have that, don't have that within five percent of policy. It is someone's standard. You can do that whatever percent, if you'd like us to percent.
I think to Garrett's point for forty dollars, you know.
Right.
Might as well. Yeah, we always want to see the bits. I don't think we write a policy that doesn't let us choose whoever we want.
I don't want to say that the lowest is the best because I've been through that road before. Lowest is not always the best.
Right. We went through that with.
Forty dollars and they're down the road here. We can talk to them about it when there's an issue, so.
Right. We did that with ripping companies. Everybody remembers.
Oh, yeah. All right.
That's it.
Moving along. Item number eleven, consider authorizing the pre-order acquisition of two police interceptor Ford vehicles from Channing Mission Ford.
Hi there, Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to make a request. Before I make that request, I would just like to say that I take my job as chief of police very seriously. And that includes the expenditure of taxpayer funds. So I study each and every time I come before you to ask for money that we're going to spend. And I just want you to know all of that. So tonight I'm asking for, to acquire two police vehicles. What this will do is this will allow us to lock in this, this year's rate to purchase the vehicles. We will come before you at a later point to discuss the financing piece of this, typically six to eight months from now. These two vehicles would be purchased on the Kansas State contract through Mark. And a rough cost of one hundred twenty four thousand, seven hundred twenty six dollars, which includes the two vehicles, the emergency equipment and any technology that goes into those vehicles. And so with that, I'll yield to any questions.
And the not police person, are the pickups the vehicle of choice now? Let's see, quick little explanation on that.
So kind of. So if, if we're going to use the pickup for patrol, yes, because what it does, it allows us more flexibility in the use of that particular vehicle. For example, the new Grapplers, if you've heard of the Grappler system, they can't be mounted on Ford Explorers or smaller SUVs like we typically utilize. And so they have to be mounted on a truck chassis. And so the Ford F-150s allows us to do that. Yes. I have not. It looks like it would be quite the experience though. It does. On, sure, the truck, the truck is, let's see. The F-150 is forty six thousand, two ninety seven. Whereas the Ford Explorer is forty three thousand, three eighty three. The, the truck is a little bit cheaper to equip and so than the Explorer. And so all the time you add the technology and the emergency equipment to these vehicles, they're just a few hundred dollars a piece difference between the two. Well, we haven't sold a truck yet. I will say the Explorers typically have a higher resale value than our other vehicles for example.
And these were on the, the schedule to be replaced for next year?
Yes, yes. And I say that to be fluid because we have some vehicles who dependability wise, they may have lower mileage, but they're always in the shop. We're constantly having to fix them. They're outside warranty, that sort of thing. And so sometimes it makes a little bit more sense to go ahead and take that vehicle, even though it might be a little bit less value. I understand the will of the council is to try to get as close to a hundred thousand miles as possible. So I'm not looking. So I'm not looking to replace a sixty thousand mile vehicle. These vehicles that I would replace would have at least a hundred thousand miles or pretty close to it, if not much higher by the time the new vehicles come in.
Okay, that was my next question. How many miles do most of these have?
Yes, so one of them right now has a little over a hundred and thirty thousand. I anticipate by the time the new vehicles come in, this thing will have a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. And the second vehicle right now is roughly a little over eighty thousand miles. Six to eight months from now, it'll have a hundred thousand miles, if not maybe a lot higher.
And they were on, what, on the list, right?
They are. Yeah, everything we have is on the list. You're talking about the list that's submitted.
The vehicle rotation list?
Yes, and I had three on there. And so I would just like to say the third one, I didn't come before you on that because it's always been in the shop. It was involved in an accident, and so the mileage on that particular vehicle didn't rise like we thought it would. So we're not requesting to replace it at this time. So we're only requesting to purchase two vehicles versus three at this point.
So then you won't replace the third vehicle next year?
Next year, yes. It'll be, I'll have to come before you with at least three, if not higher. I know that budget wise, it would be hard to replace more than three at a particular time. So it'll probably be three next time when I come to you.
For the next year?
For.
Twenty-seven.
So this time in twenty twenty-six, when I come before you, it'll be probably for three vehicles because at that point, my entire patrol fleet will be at a hundred thousand miles, if not higher. And so that really pushes the fleet out. The appearance of the vehicles, you know, by the time vehicles get used twenty-four seven, levers start breaking because the plastics age out, you know, just various problems with the car.
So the, because I'm looking at the rotation schedule right now. So there was three for twenty-six, and then there's still only three for twenty-seven, right?
Yes, but by not doing one now.
Okay.
So that one will be carryover to twenty twenty-seven.
So then four. Is there?
Possibly, but coming before you, to me, is just going to be a difficult pill to swallow if I come to you and say, I need to replace four cars at two hundred thousand dollars. You know, so I'm trying to space this out to where, even though I might have put an X on the box here, I need fluidity in order to manage the fleet so that that way I can say, look, I can stomach replacing these two or three vehicles now, and we can make these two or three vehicles last into the following year.
Okay.
You know, but like I said, the longer we wait in replacing vehicles, the further the, that bigger hill comes much faster on replacing much more than just two or three vehicles at a time.
If I could just speak to this. Every fourth year, you have to replace the vehicles based on the rotation. Problem we had is COVID delays. Remember, it took forever and ever and ever. We bought three dogs. I mean, it's just really got, since then, it's been calm. Really got. And so financially, even though he may want to ask for four, remember that the way we fund these, every year, there's cars coming off what we're funding. So it's actually less money, right? Because we pay in threes and smalls. Just think, one, two, three. These are falling off, but we keep adding. So the number is relatively steady between one hundred and fifteen to one hundred and twenty-five thousand. But when you do delays, that's the spike he's talking about. Instead of, say, one twenty on the average payment every year that we make, this is now one thirty-two or something. So it's always good to stay on schedule because your pay, your budget doesn't vary so drastically. So that's.
Chief, here's a question that always comes up. It, Shawnee Mission Ford is the mark.
Yes.
Discount.
It is.
Nothing in Wyandotte County.
Shawnee Mission Ford is the state contract that we go through. That's the representative for the state contract.
I knew that question was going to come up. I knew what the answer was going to be. That's why I said it. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the acquisition of two police vehicles, including all associated equipment, to secure current agree. Your pricing for twenty twenty-six Ford Explorer pickup, twenty twenty-six F-150 pickup.
Explorer and a pickup, yes.
One of each for priced one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars.
Second. Move a motion from Councilman Malott, a second from Councilman Shriver. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now we go to the added executive. And I'm sorry, I just need to find my paperwork and all of this.
Administratively, we're going right through here to this office over here. Can't go to the training room. It's now the fire headquarters.
We don't have to wear our coats. So just when, for this, can a councilperson say so moved? Or do they have to remember what I say?
I gave you two copies.
I'll hand it to somebody.
Whoever would like to make the motion.
So. Mayor, second. Oh, consider a motion.
I prefer things written for the record.
I don't have to read this, though. Councilman Shriver could read it.
That language is great, but yeah.
Okay. How much time are we going to be?
Consider a term. Twenty minutes. Would to include.
City Attorney, city manager?
City Attorney, city manager. Like to make a motion to recess into administrative, or sorry, executive session. Consider a motion in accordance with KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two for consultation with the city attorney regarding information which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship related to ongoing litigation for twenty minutes, which will include city manager and city attorney.
Second. Move a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Is it cold in there?
Peter's out. Got a little, little park here.
This conference will now be recorded.
That was it. Make a motion to return to regular session.
Second. Move a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
City manager, anything for us this evening?
We would probably entertain a special meeting.
That's right. I was just.
We recommend staff, legal, all recommend a special meeting.
Do I have verbiage for that?
Yeah, on that same piece of paper. Give it away.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that is.
Consider adoption of ordinance ten ninety-four. Establishing, oh, no, that's not this.
But says for special governing body.
No, you need, you need.
It's a motion on this paper?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I've not handed that one, isn't it?
You might have handed it over.
Yes, that's it.
That's what Garrett gave me. I'm sorry. This is the Edwardsville Governor's governing body number. Oh, so then that would be you. Pardon me? So I'll hear a motion to consider a special meeting. That will be provided by a governing body member.
Yes. Mayor, are you calling a special meeting?
Yes.
Therefore, you entertain the motion.
I'll entertain a motion to call for a special meeting. We don't do this often.
Oh, my gosh.
You're going to write it bigger next time?
I, Margaret Shriver, I'm going to read this whole thing.
Yes, please, just do it.
I, Margaret Shriver, the undersigned governing body member of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, hereby respectfully request to call a special meeting of the governing body on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at the five?
Five.
Five P.M. To be held at City Hall, six ninety South Fourth Street for the object and purpose of considering the following items. To consider adoption of ordinance ten ninety-four and ordinance establishing a local truck route exception to the code of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, Chapter twelve Local Traffic Regulations by amending section twelve point oh-three point one-two-two and repealing the existing section twelve point oh-three point one-two-two.
Second. Move a motion from Councilman Shriver, a second from Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Mayor, we request three signers for that special meeting. Three council people.
So they'll just sign after.
Fill out that piece of paper.
So we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Mullen, do you have any comments? Councilman Everhart?
No comments.
Councilman Garrett, or Councilman Malott?
Whatever. Don't call me like December.
Yes, of course, I've got comments. But everybody, everybody left. I wanted to make sure that the thanks go out to all the veterans that have served our country in various military capacities. I wish that they were here so they could hear that. I think we've got quite a few of them in Edgewood, and they do prove their worth in what they do for our community. I wanted to compliment Mathies and Wyndham on the water main issue that happened down there. It seems to me like you guys handled a catastrophic situation or are handling a catastrophic situation pretty well. Hopefully, with that, the FEMA or the emergency management thing coming up, that all of that kind of comes together while controlling those issues. Looks like our Saney backhoe is doing a pretty good job. It saved eight thousand dollars on digging for buried cables down at the, at the park for the pickleball lights. Chuck Sides will be awful happy that there's lights going in there by late. The, oh, and also the chief of police for, and all of you for the diligence in your purchasing and budgeting abilities on replacing these vehicles. I think that you really got the interest of Edwardsville at heart on that purchasing prowess that you do. It's great that you organize that stuff so well. With that, I appreciate Greg Kendall showing up. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Shriver?
Um, just a few things. So I want to test the city staff. Just let us know next meeting, next couple of meetings, how many VRBO or Airbnb's the city of Edwardsville does have right now, active? Just when you get a chance. Would like to, like Councilmember Malott said, recognize Veterans Day. Thanks to all the veterans. I would like to thank Major Short. Major, is it Major or Captain? Am I?
He used to be Captain, now he's Major. He was.
He's had several, right, several. I don't, no, I don't know. Been here fifteen years, sixteen years. Could you please step to the podium, sir? Thank you for, one of our two audience that has remained.
Regularly.
No, I would like to thank you for all your service, your many, many years of service. You've helped me in our neighborhood. I know you've helped many, many people throughout all the years. So thank you. Baser is lucky to have you. I know you'll do an amazing job. We're sorry to see you go. Is your last day Friday? Well, the best of luck to you. Thank you. I'd also like to thank Mayor Kahar, who organizes the Edwardsville Mobile Pantry. She's done this for five years, six years. Has organized this great event. It wouldn't happen unless Mayor Kahar organizes it. There's several volunteers that come help, but none of it would happen without her leadership and her organization. Thank you. I had something else now. I can't remember. Oh, I would like to say our contract. We have asked the Mobile Home Park several years, several years. And it's interesting to find out tonight that it really wouldn't have been a different price. So I, you know, and I, and I get it, too. I know we had trouble with them back when the post office was closed. We've had trouble contacting anybody there. It's almost, I mean, so thank you for any staff that's tried to reach out to them. It's kind of, I think they're disadvantaged, but whatever the case may be, that was interesting to find that out.
They're a different group almost every few years.
Right.
Along those lines, the containers, they have routinely provided containers for those folks to dump into. What our coordination effort should be is, this is our day. Bring your own containers as well. I mean, now that they're being serviced by the same company, you know, let's do it at the same day, but keep them, they used to plant them on the streets out there, and then they would have their own dump day. We tried to coordinate that with them so that it's all one kind of community-wide event, a part of the community.
Right, right. One last comment. I'm excited to see the house go away now that it's finally covered. Funny how that turns out, but anyway. That's all I have.
Councilman Adcox?
I do have one thing. I saw the new pickleball sign, and I think that it would be wise to change it from the hour of playing. Because it's allowing people to, an hour to play, and that's going to deter people. Nobody's going to want to wait an hour for somebody to finish their game. Usually, and I looked it up from other parks that we've gone to, the play is limited to one game to eleven. And then that way, people have time to like switch in and out. And I think, I think the hour is not a good idea. Because I, I can tell you, I would leave. I'd say, I'm not waiting an hour for somebody to play. And I would go to a different park, and I don't want that to happen.
Sure, how we approach that. I know there was different variations of that. We weren't sure if it's just, what do you play? Play the different scores. So that was, some people had, you know.
You could play a lot of games in an hour.
Yeah, that's what I understood. Do you think there's already backup because of that? Or is it simply, hey, I'm not going to pay for them to clear out?
I would. Personally, if I came and the courts were full, and I had to wait an hour, I'd go somewhere else. I wouldn't want to wait an hour to do that. And the way that they have it at the other parks makes more sense. Like, you give people time to be able to, like, I'd sit there and wait for somebody to play until eleven. You know what I mean? Before.
Or the score of eleven.
Yeah, eleven points is what I mean. Like, they, yeah.
So that, you would take away the time, but put it to the score.
Yeah.
So the amount of time it takes somebody to win at eleven.
It could be super quick. Like, I'm telling you.
So what would the sign say?
I'm going to look this other one up. It says, play is limited to one game to eleven if players are waiting. So if somebody's waiting to play a game, you guys can only play your game until eleven, until you, like, for the game, and then you give somebody else a turn to play. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we could certainly give you some. We'll look at it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Well, we will wrap this up quickly. Couple of notes. One is to, wanted to just recognize Major Short for his service to our community. That's a long time to serve in a city our size especially. The law enforcement line of work is not always a safe one. And I know from community members that Major Short is not just a paper pusher, but he's out there on the street working alongside his officers, and that's something you don't see all the time. And so that's very appreciated to have somebody on administrative that also is out on the street. So thank you for doing that. We appreciate your service to our city. Groundbreaking today, I feel it went really well. Thank you to the community members that were able to come and join us. That was a very meaningful day for our city, recreating the heart of this community with these buildings and investing in our community. It's just, it was a really big day. So thanks for everybody that made that happen. Edwardsville Mobile Pantry, do you have numbers for that? That could not happen without our faithful volunteers, and many of those are serving in our, in our governing body. And then also, we have community members that are there every single time, no matter the weather. And this, this month, we were able to serve ten thousand six hundred ninety-six pounds of groceries to eight hundred and eighty-five people. We had double our typical signups, a lot of need this month. And so it was great timing. People really, really appreciated it. We had some new faces because of. We had some new faces because of the government being shut down and people missing out on paychecks. And so it was just a good time, good timing for us to be there and to be able to serve people in our community. So thank you to everyone who puts out an effort. We have city staff that even put out the memos, like, hey, sign up, and so people know about it. So there's a lot of hands on deck there. Happy Veterans Day. Please thank any veterans that we have, people especially that have served in the military and protected our country. Thank you.